All right, if I could get everyone's attention, it's my privilege to start the meeting this evening for the January 11th, 2024, call the meeting to order. First, we'd like to congratulate Mr. Brand on his reelection and congratulate Mr. Fisher and Mr. Williams on their election, looking forward to working with everyone. First item we have is the invocation, and we have Mr. Long, if you could lead us in the invocation.
I'd like to say good, happy New Year to everyone, and uh...
Happy New Year.
Thank you. You know, Lord, may it mercifully be, thank you for bringing us into a new year, for as you allow us to carry this meeting on in a way that will help Northumberland County and the citizens of this county. We ask that each of us vote in a way that would improve not only us, us as a board, but as a county, through your son's name, Jesus Christ our Lord, amen.
Amen. Everyone, please stand and join me in the pleasurable egress. Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
To the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is our organizational meeting for the calendar year 2024. The first item that we have is the election of chairman of the board of supervisors. We'll open the floor for any nominations for chair.
I nominate Mr. Haney, chair.
And nomination, any others? No other nominations, I'll close it, and all those, do I have a motion for Mr. Haney to be chair?
So move.
Second.
I'm gonna stand.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Long, okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And you're standing. All right, congratulations, Mr. Haney, I'll pass it over to you.
All right, thank y'all, gentlemen, thank y'all very much. Uh, our next item would be election of a vice chair to the board, do I have any nominations?
Mr. Haney, I'd like to nominate Mr. Jimmy Brand as vice chairman.
Mr. Brand, all right. All right, do I have any other nominations? If not, can I have a second?
A second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? There you go, Mr. Brand, thank you. All right, next item would be the approval of the adoption of the bylaws. Hope everybody's had a chance to go ahead and review the bylaws, do you see any changes or deletions or whatever that we may need to do to it? Tadlock, you have any comments on the bylaws?
I do not, they are the same as they were.
Same as they were.
Last year, yes, sir.
I move that we adopt them.
Adopt, all right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion, a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, one thing, let's see, before we go into further, I had a request that when we're voting, if we can kind of just raise our hand a little bit, so especially for the press, needs to be able to see who's voting for or against. That take your things for you, Jackie? Yes, ma'am, sorry, I forgot it. That's all right. Next would be the schedule of board of supervisors' meeting dates. Hope everyone's had a chance to review them. Meeting dates look okay?
Yes, I move that we adopt them.
All right, I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second it.
All right, got a motion, second, any other discussion? If not...
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, they are the dates, but the time is still set at 5:30 PM.
Okay, let's make sure we have that too, thank you. All right, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those against? All right. Next would be our 2024 holidays for the county offices. This follows what the state scheduled?
It does, yes, sir.
All right, on, um... Let's see, we, what did we, we did, we took off the day after Christmas, didn't we? This past year.
Yes, sir. We followed what the courts, judicial system did.
All right.
Christmas and New Year's, wasn't it? Correct, yes, sir.
Yeah.
And we'll, we can keep an eye on any changes that the state will do, or anyone, of course, get that to the board.
Yeah, because we can, we can go back and readjust that.
Yes, sir.
All right, does the schedule look okay to board members? All right, can I...
I move with it.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second it.
All right, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, and next would be the approval of the agenda, do we have any additions or deletions?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one addition to the closed meeting, 2.2-3711-829, in reference to a public contract with Rob Mangrum, and if the board wishes to, since we do not have any public hearings tonight, if the board wants to move the public, or the closed meeting after the public comments.
Much pleasure to board on that.
That's, I think that's what we need to do.
Yeah, I think we need to do that.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea to move the public comments up, closed meeting to the end. Is that okay for all the board members? All right, no other changes, anybody have any other changes? All right, if not, I entertain a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the agenda with the changes.
With the changes, okay. We got a motion, a second, any other discussion on that? If not, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right. Next, I have approval of the minutes, and that would be a December the 14th, 2023 regular board meeting. I hope everybody's had a chance to review the minutes, are there any additions or deletions to the minutes? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the minutes from the December meeting.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I got a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, and next would be our presentations. Mr. Tadlock, I'll turn that over to you right there.
Okay. The first item we have is a resolution recognizing Ellen Booker Kirby. Whereas Ms. Ellen Booker Kirby began her public service career in Northumberland County, Virginia at the age of 22 as deputy treasurer in August 1978, and Ms. Ellen Booker Kirby was elected as the treasurer of Northumberland County a little over one year after she began her career in 1979. And Ms. Booker Kirby has the seventh treasurer to serve in Northumberland County since the office was created by the Virginia General Assembly during the 1869-1870 session. And Ms. Kirby has provided over four decades of service to Northumberland County and has greatly contributed to the quality and success of the county. And the same Ms. Kirby has shown great leadership, mentorship, and friendship to many who have fought with and for her throughout the years of service to the county. And now therefore be it resolved, at the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors, with the support of citizens of Northumberland County, hereby extends its deepest appreciation and gratitude to Ms. Ellen Booker Kirby for all of her contributions and dedication of service to Northumberland County. And be it further resolved that the board congratulates Ellen Booker Kirby upon her retirement and wishes her happiness, good health, and much success in retirement.
All right, do I have a motion? Have a motion to approve?
So move.
All right, got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ms. Kirby, would you be so kind to come up, please?
Chairman, I'd like to thank you. I've always been very helpful to the school, ever we had a question, we would lay it on and give you answers. Also, for this one, I'm pleased you're in the hall, which we've had quite a few.
Next resolution we have is honoring Thomas H. Tomlin. Whereas Mr. Thomas H. Tomlin served as district four member of Northumberland County Board of Supervisors for 24 years, and Mr. Tomlin demonstrated a deep concern for the welfare of the county citizens throughout his years of service in the most caring and professional manner, and Mr. Tomlin was a faithful, hands-on board member who will be greatly missed for his dedication and willingness to serve his community. And the same Mr. Tomlin was presented with some very complex and controversial issues that came before the board of supervisors for many years. But he always kept the interest of the county citizens first and foremost in his decision in ma- decision-making, excuse me. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors, with the support of the citizens of Northumberland County, hereby expresses its deepest appreciation and gratitude to Thomas H. Tomlin for all his contributions and dedication of service to the county and its citizens. And be it further resolved that the board hereby thanks Mr. Tomlin for all his hard work and dedication while on the board, and wishes him much happiness and good health in the future.
All right, can I have a motion? Approve the resolution?
So move.
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Mr. Tomlin, would you come up, please?
I'd like to present this to you for your 24 years of service, which we deeply missed. We've had a lot of conversations, we didn't always agree, but we left every room here to the friends, and that's what always happens. Thank you, Senator, for your service.
Next resolution is honoring Maurice E. Johnson. Whereas Mr. Maurice E. Johnson served as the interim district five member of the North umberland County Board of Supervisors from September 14th, 2023 to December 31st, 2023, and Maurice E. Johnson confidently stepped forward and accepted this position when the county was in need of filling the vacant position. And the same Mr. Johnson was presented with some complex and controversial issues that came before the board of supervisors during his time of service, but he always kept the interest of the county citizens first and foremost in his decision-making. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors hereby expresses its deepest appreciation and gratitude to Maurice E. Johnson for his willingness to serve the county citizens during this time. And be it further resolved that the board of supervisors hereby thanks Mr. Johnson for his hard work and dedication put into this board, and wishes him much happiness and good health in the future.
All right, can I have a motion approved? All right, I got a motion to have a second? Got a motion, a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson, would you be so kind, come up?
A little bit of appreciation here from the board here, for your three months of service here from the board. You stepped right up, filled the right end, and you've been helping us. Good ideas, all that bad ideas too, you know we didn't reach, but that's all right. But I'd like to present this to you, with my own general appreciation for your attention.
Let's see, where am I? All right, and next presentation would be the Julius Rosenthal School Foundation, Mrs. McCoy. Would you come on up, please, ma'am? Yes, ma'am, right there, please? We'll get that mic turned down a little bit for you.
How much?
How you doing today?
I'm good.
Good.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm here on behalf of the Julius Rosenthal School Foundation of Northumberland County to make a request. But first, I would like to tell you some facts about our foundation, Rosenthal Schools, and our historic site. The Julius Rosenthal Foundation of Northumberland County is a nonprofit organization that was established in 2010 to preserve the legacy of the Julius Rosenthal High School in Reesville. The school is one of the largest Rosenthal schools built in the early 20th century. Our mission is to restore the property, continue the literacy of the school, and provide services to the need of the community. The Rosenthal Schools were built between 1912 and 1932 throughout the South to educate African-American students. They were the result of a friendship between Booker T. Washington and Julius Rosenthal, who at that time was CEO of Sears Roebuck Company. Facts about the Julius Rosenthal High School in Reesville, our historic site. It is one of the largest schools built using money obtained through grants from the Julius Rosenthal Fund. There are only two two-storied Rosenthal Schools still standing, and the one in Reesville is one of them. The school was the only high school for African-Americans in Northumberland County for over 40 years. The school was built in 1917. It was built at a cost of $11,143. The original name of the school was a Northumberland County Training School. After the death of Julius Rosenthal in 1932, the school's name was changed, and it was changed to the Julius Rosenthal High School at that particular time. The reason why it was changed at that time is because Rosenthal died, and his request was while he was living, no schools would be named after him. It was closed permanently in 1960. In 1961, it was sold to a private family. 2010, the Julius Rosenthal School Foundation of Northumberland County was created. In 2014, the family that purchased the school in 1960 gave it back to the foundation in 2014. In 2022 December, it was placed on Virginia Landmark Register. In October 2023, it was placed on the United States Department of Interior National Register of Historic Places. It will cost about $1 million to restore the school. We have raised about $35,000, which has been used to install windows, paint, and pressure wash the school. The Julius Rosenthal Foundation is asking the county to make us a donation of $10,000. We will use it to paint the roof, complete the installation of windows on the side and rear of the school. At the present time, we are applying for grants through the African-American Cultural Courageous Action Fund and the Save American Treasurer Grant Fund. At the completion of our project, the building will house a museum on the legacy of the school and a community center. Some examples for the uses of the building we are considering, meeting rooms for groups, classroom space for off-campus classes for colleges and universities, field trips for schoolchildren, and tours for tour groups. I have mentioned several things that I want to show you, give you some more information about, the relationship between Booker T. Washington and Julius Rosenthal. I said started as friendship. It started when Julius Rosenthal read this book by Booker T. Washington, Up from Slavery. He sent for Booker T. Washington, this is a picture of them together. Julius Rosenthal and Booker T. Washington. He sent for Booker T. Washington and, to have lunch with him, Booker T. Washington went and they immediately became friends. Booker T. Washington soon realized that Rosenthal had money, and he talked him into building these schools for black children. That is how the school, the Julius Rosenthal Fund, was set up, and it was used in North umberland County, as I said, throughout the South, I think went from Texas to Virginia. Over 5,000 schools were built. This is a picture of the inside of the school as it looks today. If you would go on the web, go on the internet and type in Julius Rosenthal High School, rebuild Virginia, you will see a several other pictures that look like this, you will get to see the inside of the school, you get a little tour. Now, this is a picture of how the school looked when it was in use. After it was not in use anymore, it looked like this. I'm sure a lot of people have seen it looking like this. Now, I said we had painted the school, pressure washed the school, and installed some windows. This is how the school looks today. And someone who may have seen this picture before. Now, at the end of our project, this is how the back of the school will look. We have to put in plumbing facilities, handicap facilities, because when we went to school there, there were no indoor bathrooms, and also there were no heat. We had to go outside to get wood to be warm in school because there were no heating system there, and also we went outside to the bathroom. I went to that school, I know. This concludes my presentation, but I want the board of supervisors to know that the Julius Rosenthal Foundation of Northumberland County will gladly accept and appreciate any assistance you can give us. But again, our request is for a $10,000 donation to paint the roof and to complete the installation of the windows at our historic site. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any board members have any questions?
Not at this time.
Good presentation. A good presentation.
Thank you.
Yes, it was, very good presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Website's very informational, too.
All right. The next item would be Pam King, our new treasurer.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm coming before you this evening to recommend a change in the tax due date from December 5th to November 5th, and we've got a few reasons why, I think you should have in front of you. For the taxpayers' benefit, to move the date away from the holidays. For the county to get the revenue in a little sooner. And for our collections, the tools that we use for the debt set-off money for the Department of Taxation, we have to provide a list to them by December 31st of delinquencies, and it's just a short window for us to get the bills paid, or if they're not paid, send out delinquent notices, and then give the taxpayers time enough to have that bill paid or unpaid so that we can submit that list of delinquencies to the Department of Taxation for that year. And you can see, just last year, we used the debt set-off and collected $162,901.23. So we don't want to not get the delinquent list in and lose that collection tool.
How much time do you give after the, after the due date, then you send your delinquent notice, how much time is given in there for them to pay?
We're supposed to allow them 14 days to pay.
That does cut it kind of short, doesn't it?
Yes.
14 days after due date.
Yeah, so it's December the 5th, so that's back on the 19th, ninth, yeah. But they can give you very long. And you don't get your delinquent letters out on the 6th of December, do you?
No.
All right, and then you got the holidays coming in, and the way the mail's been...
Yes.
Okay. All right, any board members have any questions?
Yes, Pam, how long would it, a day would that be on that last day? Would, would it be extended? I mean, you usually close at what time?
Um, we close at 5:00.
Right. You have the same time that last day, or will you extend?
Yes.
That almost done?
That's it.
Any other board members have any questions? All right.
November the 5th, right?
Taxpayers can pay 12 months of the year if they want, can't they?
Yes.
Yeah, like you do.
This is just going to increase your due date, I mean, yeah, make your due date earlier back in November, give you a little more time. I could, I can see your schedule there of being jammed up, yeah. Questions from board members? Staff have any comments? What would the board members like to do? Do we need to do a public hearing, anything on this?
Yes, I, what I would suggest is if that's what the board is, is interested in, in pursuing, is to authorize me to get with the county attorney to look at the specific code sections related to that and see what is needed for any public hearings and to move forward. I do know there's going to be a tight timeframe there, so we will certainly try to, to move on that as soon as we can.
All right, well, let's make a motion, I'll make a motion that we proceed with getting this advertised and whatever we need to do with the code sections to get this process started.
I'd go ahead and advertise it for the February meeting.
If that's not going to cut you too close to get everything that you need?
I'll certainly get with the county attorney and see what we can get together, and the treasurer.
All right. All right, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, I got a motion, a second, do I have any other discussion on this from the board members? If not, if not, everyone, everyone say aye?
Aye.
Everyone against? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. All right, next item is... Next item is Virginia Department of Transportation. Mr. Beal, good to see you, sir. Happy New Year to you here.
Hey, good to see you. Happy New Year to you. Mr. Fisher and Mr. Williams, I am David Beal, I'm the resident engineer for the Northern Neck, in charge of operations and maintenance throughout the Northern Neck. So that includes King George and all the four counties of the Northern Neck. So if you have any questions with anything VDOT, my contact information is on the, is on your report. That number there rolled to my cellphone, so if you dial it, I'll get it. We have been busy. I would say, too, I emailed Mr. Tadlock a link to what we call the Board of Supervisors' manual, and it's a reference guide to all things VDOT. So if you haven't gotten that, if you've got it, it's a, it's a good reference to any program or policy that VDOT has, so it might answer a lot of your questions. I find, too, that if you're having a hard time sleeping, it's a, it's a, it's a good remedy for that as well. But we've been busy despite the weather. We've completed some brush cutting on Pumpkin Hill Road, Holneck, Blunden Road, and in White Sand Harbor. We've cut trees on King's Cut, Old Typer's, and in White Sand Harbor. And we've been patching potholes, cleaning signs, and addressing work orders countywide. Here lately, we've had a storm to respond to every couple of days, so we've been doing that. We had some trees to get up this week here in the county. We did take the ferries out of service for the wind that we had. They went back into service today. Sunnybank went back into service today. We'll wait and see what the wind does tomorrow, but I expect at some point we'll have to shut it down for the wind tomorrow. And we are expecting snow on Tuesday, so we can get through tomorrow, then maybe we'll get a little break. That Martin Luther King holiday usually gets messed up, which we'll, probably will. So we'll be working. Upcoming, we still have our pipe replacements to do. We've been carrying those for a while. Hope to get them done over the winter. We have some ditches to clean at Monday Point, Hatches Avenue, Spring Road, Fountain Gate, Flood Point, and Bluff Point Road, and we'll continue to keep up with pothole signs and work orders. For the secondary six-year plan, we'll update that here in the spring, a couple of months. And then, we don't have any projects on that scheduled until 2026, and that's just based on when the funding is available for those projects. The Scow repair project on Bush Mill Creek is on track. It should go to add in February. And that is all I have. If you all have anything for me, I'm happy to take those things down.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman. Night's run. I noticed that the beavers have dammed it up pretty heavy, and the water's getting close to the road.
Okay, we'll check on that.
Right. Monday Point Road in Dudley Lane or Road, y'all had replaced the road pipe in there, but the last couple of rains, it's probably got the best of your road pipe. It's getting ready to wash your road out. And just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And pass on to all the VDOT workers, a big thank you goes out to them for the hard work that they put in during the storms and keeping everything straight and the roads clear. Those guys have put in a lot of hours in the last few days.
Thank you. Thank you. I will pass that along. Appreciate you, appreciate your comments.
Yes, your defense.
That's all I got for the storm.
Ly Street.
Ditch, ditches. One ditch that's really clogged up there with water. Pauls Neck Road is the same, same problem. It's ditched by millerways of that road that's, needs dragging. Also, I know I, I give you a little problem when it comes to Norris Bridge. You know, that bridge was built in 1957? I know, I know you knew that. It's six or seven years old. So whoever is on that board need to know that. I mean, there's no sense in that. The Norris Bridge and the Milton Bridge, I know you know about that new bridge. I believe it took them a little over two and a half years to complete that. And I don't see why we can't do something with that Norris Bridge.
All right.
Also, Brown Store Road at the Wacomico Inn, it's a state sign down. I noticed the other day, landing in the ditch. All right? Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Last month, you asked me to look at the safety at the post office in Wacomico Church. And I wasn't sure, was that right at the intersection or at the entrance to the post office?
What was that now?
You asked, you asked for us to look at the safety. You're concerned about the safety of the, at the post office in Wacomico Church. And I wasn't sure, was that the intersection of Remo Road or the entrance to the post office?
Uh, entrance to the post office.
Okay. Is there something specific there? There's a left turn lane there.
Yeah, right, that's why that water's standing on one side of it.
So the water is...
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Mr. Williams?
I don't have anything for you this month. I'll have my list for you next month.
All right.
Mr. Beal, on the Norris Bridge, your projected timeframe to replace is...
2036.
2036. What's that?
2036. Start of construction 2036.
Quite a while away it is.
It'll be here before you know it.
Oh, yeah, wait time's flying everywhere. That deal behind the year.
That's one way of looking at it.
Yeah. All right. I don't have anything else. Everything's been taken care of for me.
Yeah, I know the, I know the bridge is important to the region, and, you know, there's a lot of people talking about it.
Yeah.
At a lot of different levels, and as soon as I have more information, I'll, I'll be sure to pass that along. Currently, right now, the, it's planned for replacement in 2036. I think it's about $400 million out of the special structures fund, so the General Assembly is having some discussions about funding and timeframe and whatever else. As soon as I have something more definite than what I've got now, I'll pass that along.
Well, you know, you get a totally different view of it when you go 100.
That's wrong.
Totally different. Gets you thinking.
Yeah, we have some projects, we have some pile jacket, pile jacket project coming up, we'll replace the concrete around the piers. And we also have some structural steel repairs that we're getting ready to start working on. So as those projects develop, I'll keep you informed of it.
Okay.
Mr. Davis, the bridge, I had a friend tell me, you know, and I'm sure other people, she was coming across that bridge. First thing, it's not wide enough. And luckily, she woke up in time. You've got people falling asleep on the bridge doing things. The bridge needs work done on it, and I mean, there's no sense in that. I would like to talk to the board, who are making those decisions? You know, it doesn't make any sense. I have met a person here, it might be one in here, that's not afraid to drive across that bridge, including yourself, I know that. You know, doesn't make sense. Other states, you know, at one time, it was money out the Bill Bridge several years ago. I don't know why we didn't take advantage of that. And the average bridge, according to our, when our president, way back, said the average bridge should last 50 years, no longer 50 years. And that bridge is six or seven years old. I mean, I know you don't have a lot of...
That's because it's better than average.
But...
Huh? So what?
I said it's just better than average. You've got an above-average bridge here, Mr. Williams.
You have.
Our district bridges in here would say she could maintain it in perpetuity, that she can keep it going.
Okay.
But like I said, when I, all jokes aside, when I get more information, I'll take your concerns and let those folks in the department know, and when I get better information, I'll pass that along to you.
1957.
All right.
One, one last comment. I would just say, I always like to plug our customer service lines, 1-800-4-RODE, F-O-R-R-O-A-D. And any citizen, any concerns whatsoever, potholes, you know, snow, grass, anything you want VDOT to do, or a question you have, call that customer service line 24/7. Somebody will take your call and your comment, and they'll get it to the right person.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Beal.
All right, I'll take care of it.
All right, you do say. Next item is the update for Northumberland County Schools. Dr. Walgo?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and supervisors. I have already provided you with the highlights that we usually give you in our weekly message. This weekly message will go out tomorrow. For this evening, I wanted to focus on the boiler replacement at the elementary school. So I have Mr. Brand here, our Director of Operations and Maintenance. And then, following Mr. Brand's presentation, we have a budget update. So at this time, Mr. Brand, if you could come forward.
Good evening, Board members.
Good evening.
So we have gone through the emergency procurement phase. The school has had four vendors that supplied proposals for this job. Two of the four vendors provided what we looked at as realistic options for replacing these boilers while still maintaining heat throughout the elementary school facility. We ended up going with a company out of Richmond, called E. McLaughlin &amp; Son. They provided us with a quote that was very realistic, to include two 1 million BTU, their Lock &amp; Bar brand condensing units, their propane-fueled condensing units. So these units, what we're going to end up doing, we've already scheduled NWP to get two additional 1,000-gallon propane tanks installed on-site, with a increased line size run under the ground to a new regulator on the facility. Once that's complete, E. McLaughlin &amp; Son already has the two boilers in stock. They're ready to start the installation process. What we're going to do to maintain heat in the building, the last remaining operating diesel boiler, we're going to keep it online while we demolish the damaged boiler. We're going to pull the wall ventilation out in that room, so that we can get equipment in there to pull the damaged boiler out. We'll immediately close that up. The new Lock &amp; Bar boiler will actually be able to fit through the door into the space, because its size is substantially smaller. We are able to put this into the existing smokestack system, so that we're not impeding on the exhaust system that's currently being used with the diesel-fired boiler that we're going to keep in place to keep heat going through this process. It's going to be capped in, and it's going to be put in, even though it's exhaust from a propane system, it can still go out and evacuate the space in that same pipe. We, to maintain the diesel-fired boiler, we're going to keep the underground fuel tank in operation. Noblet is still providing us diesel oil for that. That system is still running, and we're watching it on a day-to-day basis. The new system with E. McLaughlin &amp; Son's proposal comes with a new variable-frequency regulated pump, because this does not have to have full flow all the time on the hot water recirculation side. The hot water recirculation side has already been isolated from the damaged boiler, so that's one part of the project that's already completed. The second boiler, which we're going to call Phase 2 of this process, we're going to start the demolition of it in the warmer months of the spring, when we deem that we no longer need heat in the facility for these students. And we'll get that system out, and the second boiler, which is already committed to us, will come into place. The only thing that would be remaining after that is the adjustment of these two 1 million BTU condensing units to meet the size and BTU rating of the building, and to be able to take it and electrically put it into our control system with the building, so that we can monitor it when we're not on-site as well. And that's where we're at right now. The current boiler is still running, like I said, and we are watching that on a day-to-day basis, to make sure we still have heat in the building. Any questions to this point?
What would happen if, if the boiler that's in operation right now were to quit tomorrow?
So if it quit tomorrow, we would, we would lose heat throughout that building. Our rooftop units don't have a reheat system, so these boilers are our only means of heat for Northumberland Elementary. And for the life of that building, it's only had these two diesel boiler systems for the heating system.
I guess my question is, though, how long would it take to get something up and running to provide heat into the school once that happened?
So this company, E. McLaughlin &amp; Son, has these on-site. It would take us about two days to get one up and running. And the reason being, and let me backtrack just a little bit, that is if NWP has our additional propane tanks on-site and hooked into our regulator on the facility. It's a two-day process to get that unit installed and dialed in as per the size of that facility.
One more.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, you've got it. Go ahead.
It's very easy to tie it into our hot water recirculation system. The only difference is, because of the efficiencies of these new-style units, where the old boilers, we had, what Mr. Haney would back me up on this, I think, is constant flow pumps. They run at a set PSI all the time, whereas when we meet demand with this system, and this helps with the electric usage in the building, it regulates the pumps back to what we need as far as flow to keep heat circulating in the building to all of our bow boxes throughout each classroom.
One more. What's the, what's the life expectancy on the new units?
The new units, they're rated at 25 years with adequate maintenance and support.
Question?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Brand?
I don't have anything.
Fisher? Any timeframe on Noblet getting in there?
Noblet, actually, they stated, weather pending, we could start that process this week. They have the tanks in stock over in Lancaster.
They've got to put two extra tanks to change, change the line size coming in, yeah?
Yes, sir.
Because you're going to, you're going to need more gas for...
3,000 gallons, yeah, in order to meet the 2 million BTU combined.
All right.
Are these above-ground tanks?
They are above-ground, yeah. We currently have one 1,000-gallon on-site, and these are going to be put in series right next to them.
All right. Warranty?
There is a warranty. I actually can provide y'all with it. It's, it's pretty in-depth. It's a one-year...
I know it's in-depth, yeah, just usually, it's probably one year on everything, and rest of it's prorated.
It is. All of the suppliers that we went to for proposals were coming out of the same factory, so they all had the same warranty.
Yeah. And one good thing about those new variable-speed circulator pumps, they speed up and down with demand. So the older ones, like what's on there, they had 100% capacity all the time, and these can go down, I'm going to guess that these will probably go down about 30%.
If it goes down 30%, you can run it down to 15 pounds.
Yeah.
And right now, we're pushing 55 up to 75 pounds.
Yeah. And that will make a big difference, plus the energy use.
We're going from three-phase down to single-phase on everything.
Down to single-phase, yeah. So it makes a big difference.
Yeah.
Okay. Any Board members have any questions? Any other questions? Staff have anything? All right. Thank you, Mr. Brand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. And next, we have our Director of Finance, Tara Booth, and she has a budget update.
Good evening, Ms. Booth.
Good evening, gentlemen. First, I wanted to share some exciting news, that at the end of December, we had already accrued $19,030.59, which is 76.4% of our expected Medicaid revenue for the school year. So if this pattern continues, which we expect it to do, the county should end up seeing about an extra $12,000 in revenue from Medicaid this year. Monday night, at the school board meeting, the school board approved the fiscal year '25 budget, and I will be getting that to Mr. Tadlock next week to share with you. Any questions?
All right. Board members have any questions?
I've got two.
All right.
One is, Ms. Walgo, can I schedule a time that I could come and visit the agricultural department?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Okay.
And everyone is always invited. If you'd like to schedule a meeting, you know, that's fine. If you'd like to go on a walk-through to see the facilities and to visit classrooms, we can do that, too.
You can just have somebody email me or call me.
Okay.
And that'll be fine. And the next one is, I have a question. And I've always told you before, when I ask questions, I'm not trying to be difficult or causing issues. But I've had a question asked, and I don't have an answer to it, but I'm asked, is why does it seem to be okay for certain parts of the school budget, maybe a line item or a category, to be overspent? Why is that allowed and why is it a common thing that continues to occur? And I guess, I think some individuals are looking at the budgets where some line item or categories overspent over $100,000. One more.
Do you have a specific category you're thinking of?
I was just asked that question that way. So I can get more specific and get back to you, or if you would like, and...
Let's do that.
Okay.
Because I probably need more information.
Okay.
And I can look at it on our side of it, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Long?
Yes. I don't know if you have this information, you can get back. How many students do we have at the vocational?
We typically have about 50 students who attend the Northern Neck Technical Center and Governor's STEM Academy.
What grades are those?
It is grades 10, actually, it's grades 11 and 12, juniors and seniors.
Okay, how about your STEM program?
The STEM program here that we have?
Yes.
Our STEM program is at the elementary, the middle, and then for STEM at the high school primarily. You know, students can experience STEM at the high school and/or they can participate in the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School.
Okay. Have we completed the high school track yet?
The track has not been completed yet. Sorry, y'all. So the boiler replacement, you know that we have school construction funds that we've talked about. We also know that the school board sent a letter to the supervisor saying if the school board office was turned over to be a full-time school board office, that the school board would use the school construction funds for a variety of capital improvement projects. So at that time, the school board had listed out five capital improvement projects, and I'm going to try to recall those right now. I believe it was the middle school, high school walkway where there was a concern because of it not being level and not being safe. The track was part of that. That was number, you know, that was in...
That was number five.
That's my second of five. There was a elementary school stairwell. There was a playground that was identified, as well as a carpet, removing the 20, some 26-year-old carpet and replacing it with the LVT. With that said, that took us really close to the total for the school construction funds. Now we have, and the boilers had been listed on the CIP request for a number of years, but now we have the failing boilers. So that cost, we asked Mr. Tadlock, informed him that the school board would like to apply the school construction funds to the boiler replacement. So that's, with all of that, one of these projects will probably need to wait because there isn't enough money in the school construction funds to cover that cost. So, Mr. Long, long story short, the track was on the list of priorities to use with the school construction funding, and it has been on the CIP requests for many, many years, predating me as superintendent.
Okay. How about the school buses? How are they doing?
We always are in need of school buses, and the supervisors have been very generous in trying to purchase school buses. I do know that we today were informed that an engine had failed in one of our school buses, so we're working on that.
We had a substantial amount of money put into the CIP for school buses, and you're going to use some of that money to go ahead and replace some buses this year.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
And we do appreciate your support.
Mr. Williams, you have anything?
That's all I have.
Anything else?
All right.
The boiler replacement, that's about $173,000, a little over that, so that's a pretty good little hunk of change.
Yes.
But it's needed.
That's right. And, Mr. Brand, I'll be in touch to schedule a meeting, and then we can discuss your question as well.
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions?
No? All right. Mr. Chairman, did you need any action taken by the board as related to the school construction funds to move forward with the boiler? We wouldn't do the supplemental appropriation until we actually have the invoice, so we have the exact amount, but I didn't know if you were seeking any other action or if you needed any other action.
I think that's an excellent idea, Mr. Tadlock.
Just as far as...
And the Treasurer's Office has the school construction funds.
That is correct.
So I think that would formalize.
These monies were handled a little bit different than the ESER funds. ESER funds were handled on a reimbursement basis, whereas the school construction funds were submitted to the localities. And the Treasurer did receive those and does have those monies.
All right. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Dr. Walgo, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you also.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item would be the County Administrator's Report. Mr. Tadlock, I'll let you take over on that.
All right. For December 2023, we had nine new structures. Total construction cost for the month, $3.7 million. Total construction cost year-to-date is about $59 million, which put us about $222,000 below this time last year. And Mr. McKenzie will be presenting the end-of-the-year report soon to the board to give an overview for the 2023 calendar year. Next item I have is a reappointment for Mr. Pratt-Haney for the Community Services Board. He is willing to serve.
Pleasure to be on.
All right, got a motion to reappoint, and I have a second.
Second it.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item I have is an appointment, and actually, Mr. Tomlin served on several boards, and we need an appointment back to those boards. One is to the Social Services Board, and one is to, it's an ex officio board member to the library. So I don't know if any of the board members are interested in serving on either one of those.
I'd like to do the library.
Do what?
The library.
Do the library, all right.
I'm on one, I don't know if you can be on another one or not. Can you be on two? I'm already on one.
On which, you can do multiple, or that's up to the board.
The Health Department?
Yeah, Social Services Board, yeah. I was going to suggest you take that.
Put you to work, Mr. Long.
Put you to work. I don't want you having any spare time.
I thought you had another name.
I do, Mr. Jim Long.
Yeah, I like taking that one.
All right. Let's get one at a time here. Mr. Brand wants to motion to put Mr. Brand on the Library Board. Do I have a second to that?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, Mr. Long, a motion to put Mr. Long on the Social Services Board?
Second.
All right, got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Also have District Two for the Planning Commission, Patrick O'Brien. His term is expiring this month. It's my understanding he is willing to serve again.
Yes, he is willing to serve, and I'd like to put him back on there. My motion is to approve Mr. O'Brien for the Planning Commission.
Second.
I got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. And we do have a vacant position on the Planning Commission for District Four, which is Mr. Fisher's position there. On the Economic Development Commission, we do have, still have two vacancies, District Two and District Five that we have, so I don't see anybody has any appointments there.
I do, I'd like to make a nomination. I'd like to nominate Marty Johnson to the District Five position.
All right, I got a motion to nominate Mr. Johnson to the District Five EDC.
Second it.
Motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All right. I got one. I want to, I got one here. I want to nominate Lynn Stewart to the EDC, that'll be for District Two.
Second it.
All right, got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I got one thing that is going to be a spare, is going to be somebody getting nominated late, hopefully. On the Northern Neck Planning Commission, I sit on that board. I have a major conflict with teaching at the college. It always falls on a Monday, which I cannot attend. So I would like to resign on that, and I'd like somebody else to take that place. I'll take it. Mr. Fisher? Motion to approve, Mr. Fisher, to the Northern Neck Planning Commission?
Second.
And a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you for taking over for me.
Thank you all.
Anything else?
Not as far as those items. The next board is the Chesapeake Bay Region Cigarette Tax Board. We do need a representative from the county to serve on that. I don't mind serving on that board if the board wishes to do so. The only thing that I would ask is that, there was some discussion as far as the Regional Radio System Board, and I have spoken to Chief Balderson if he would be interested in serving on that board, taking my position there.
On radio board?
On the Regional Radio Board, which would free me up to serve on the cigarette tax board, unless a board member wishes to serve on the Chesapeake Bay Region Cigarette Tax Board.
Any board member like to serve?
I will. I would do it, unless anyone else wants to. I'm looking at all the meetings that Lotro Now has.
It's got a lot of meetings.
And it's no need to keep adding, adding to it.
If we keep adding, I'm afraid we're going to have to clone him.
So, I mean, if no one else wants to do that, I will do it this year.
All right. If you want to do that, all right. Motion to put Mr. Brand on the cigarette tax board. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, got a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. And did you do everything you wanted on the radio board? Is Mr. Balderson going to take that, Chief Balderson?
It's up to the board if you all wish to...
How do you want to do that?
I can do either one.
I wish the pleasure of the board.
I can do either one, whatever the board wishes to do.
I don't see where it's, in starting that board and one of the original members on it, I don't, and I don't mean this in a bad way, I don't see where, when it gets down to the operations of radio system with county administrator, really will play a big role into attending those meetings. Any decisions that's made and that needs to come back before the Board of Supervisors for approval anyhow. And I'm just looking, again, Mr. Tadlock having multiple meetings and a lot on his plate now. You know, why do we need to keep adding to it when we have people capable of handling those meetings?
And I will say, Chief Balderson has been the primary one that's been attending the sessions so far with L3 Harrison and so forth, so he's up to speed on that system, so...
Chief Balderson, you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
All right. You going to, is that your motion?
Yes.
Second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you, Mr. Balderson. And I hope that lightens your load a little bit, Lord.
No, but appreciate it.
Yeah, I hope it does.
All right. Next item we have is a supplemental appropriation for a grant received for the EMS Department. A total amount is $2,800. Part of that goes to line item 3203-5409 in the amount of $948.24. The second part of that amount goes to 3506-7100 in the amount of $1,851.76.
All right. Wish the pleasure of the board.
Still move.
I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item we have before you is the EMS billing rates have not changed since 2018, and the exemption rate sheet has not changed since the board adopted the original EMS billing in 2015. Recently, the Emergency Ambulance Services Revenue Recovery Board met, and a lot of the localities are looking at modifying their rates to keep up with the rising cost. So before you is a proposal, and the board, these rates were originally done by resolution, and they were not done by ordinance, so the board can pass these by resolution to move forward, if the board wishes to do so. Basically, the proposed rates for basic life support would go to $720. Advanced life support, one would be...
Would you just say what current rate is and then...
Sure. Basic life support, current rate is 500, proposed 720. Advanced life support, one, currently 650, proposed 900. Advanced life support, two, is currently 750, proposed 1,020. Mileage, currently $15 per load mile, proposed mileage is $20 per load mile. Now, the current exemption scale currently starts at less than $20,000. It would be 100% exemption, and the proposed exemption scale would start less than $25,000 would be the exemption. I know Chief Balderson has been in contact with several of the other localities that have been looking at this, and they have increased that proposed exemption to $27,000, less than $27,000, to be fully exempt. I don't know if Chief Balderson has any additional information he'd like to add to that, but that is kind of the overview that we have before the board.
Chief Balderson, you have anything to add, sir?
Nothing to add, but I would like I'm comfortable to answer any questions.
Would you please, sir? Like questions from the board?
So the proposed new rates, that will put us in line, or actually will pretty much be what every other county is charging, so to make it easier for the billing agency to keep up with the bill.
That's exactly right. All the Northern Neck agencies in Essex County, all the agencies that are served by our billing company, the PDC, met and came up with these figures so that everybody's on the same playing field, makes it easier for the... All the Northern Act agencies in Essex County, all the agencies that are served by our billing company, the PDC, met and came up with these figures so that everybody's on the same playing field, makes it easier for the billing company. The only caveat to that would be what Mr. Luttrell had said, where I believe Richmond County altered their to 27 versus 25. But the billing rates are the same for each locality.
So we still have the, if someone doesn't have insurance, we have the household income brackets to where it would help them...
Yes, that's why we increased the hardship by 5,000 from 20,000 to 25,000, to go along with that increase in the billing rates as well.
And a lot of what we collect is from insurance anyhow?
Yes. So our two primary collections, if you will, is private insurance and Medicare. When we break down and look at our billing sheets that we get from the PDC, those are the two primaries. And then we get into the secondary billing and some of those other alternatives, but those are the two primary. And again, Medicare sets the rate, and they only pay what their rate is. So we can set the rate at what we need to, to try to recuperate the expenses, but they're only going to pay what their rate is set at.
And we need to at least be at their rate?
Yes.
All right, any other questions? Any other board members have any questions?
What's the majority of Medicare against all others? Are they a third of your billings?
So, for example, in December, 18% was Medicare, and 16% was private insurance. And then the others filled into that. So about 20%, of that, that was just for the month of December.
The proposed rate change for mileage will go from 15 per loaded mile, $15 per loaded mile to 20 per loaded mile. What is considered a loaded mile?
So when we actually load the patient into the ambulance and start transporting them to a destination, whether at whichever hospital that may be.
Any other questions?
When you go to a residence, for instance, and you get a refusal, is there any charge there?
No, sir.
Some counties do have a set fee for patient refusals or public assist.
Something to think about.
And that, you bring that up, that may be changing in the future. And the reason I say that is some other regulations that are coming into play in 2024 that are going to affect us, that would then give us the ability to build some additional, for some additional monies.
Any other questions? All right. Wish the pleasure of the board. You need a...
We actually need two separate actions. There are two separate resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Balderson.
One for the EMS billing, and then one for the exemption resolution.
All right, wish the pleasure of the board. We'll take the EMS billing first.
Make a motion, we move forward with the changes.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All right. All right. We need a motion for the exemption.
For the exemption for users of the rescue services, that resolution.
All right.
So moved.
So moved. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything else you need, Mr. Tadlock?
Not on that, we've got that covered. Thank you all. Next item we have is Mr. Bullard with the, it's the executive director of the Economic Development Commission, is here this evening. He has been working with the Economic Development Commission and Lisa Hall and Mr. Basie on the ARPA tourism funds, and he has a presentation or a billboard market analysis that he would like to present to the board tonight for some funding.
Good evening, gentlemen. What you have in front of you is a marketing analysis report that we did in support of selecting the billboard advertising. Just want to go through the methodology with you and how we determined the agency that we selected. We looked at three different billboard-ing agencies, Billboards Inn, Lamar, and Clear Channel Outdoor. And looking at them, I noticed that they all had different offerings. Some of them had billboards only on the roadside, some had digital media, so it was kind of difficult to try and get a level set of what they were offering. Looked at four different land-based areas throughout, surrounding Northland County, and the reason why is because we want to make sure that we had maximum viewing with short time to get into Northland County. And looking at our comparisons, we looked at several different factors. We looked at the pricing that they were offering. We looked at the potential views. Potential views is equated to how many different views or looks we'll get for that particular advertising region. Looked at dispersion, again, that's how far, how broad we could get across the Northland County area. I looked at the media type, whether or not they're offering digital or printed. And we looked at the advertising type. We found three distinct advertising types, which was the, when you go get your gas, put your gas, start pumping your gas, and some of those, some of the gas stations now have digital media, so you can see advertisements. There's some, they were offering a bar and restaurant video advertisements, so you can enjoy food or drink while you're catching news about Northland County. And then there's also the roadside factor as well. I won't show, and there's the scales that I gave, that I chose for how to rank order all these different agencies. If you looked at the, on slide three, the analysis shows the pricing, the potential views, all those different categories, and what those different agencies were offering with respect to those. After we ranked ordered those, after I ranked ordered those, the results came in, and we determined that Billboards Inn was the optimal choice to be able to select, to provide us the media. Slide four, slide four shows you those results. Slide five shows you an update to the results. So this analysis was performed in November. The decision was made to go with Billboards Inn in December. Soon after that decision was made, probably a couple weeks later, EDC, we had to go back in and look at our ARPA tourism modification to the budget that we had submitted. In doing so, we determined that we were going to be able to transfer some of the monies from other advertising agents, capabilities within the ARPA tourism budget that we had set, and provide some more into Billboards Inn, into the budget for the Billboards Inn. When we did that, Billboards Inn reciprocated with a pretty good generous offering, and that's shown in the bottom of page five. The bottom line is it'll be about $12,697. It's going to cover over, potentially 1.4 million views for the advertisement. We're going to have nine different locations, and they're going to be all digital. Now, when I say nine different locations, the areas we're talking about is La Plata, Maryland, it's up in Alexandria, Virginia, Manassas, Woodbridge, Richmond. Those are the major areas for the restaurants, and then we have sprinklings of gas station areas in the same location. That's my presentation. The backup slides, the slides after that is detailed analysis of each of the different media that each agency was offering. Are there any questions?
Board members have any questions? Very good presentation.
It is. Thanks, gentlemen.
Hold on just a second, make sure nobody's got any questions. Anybody got any questions? All right. Very good presentation.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir. Mr. Tadlock, we do need to have the screen up, all our meetings. Let you go on to your next item whenever you... You take your time now.
No, I think Mr. Bullard was needing some action by the board to move forward with Billboard's Inn, excuse me.
And the ARPA funds are taking care of this, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So moved, I think we need to move forward with it.
All right, so the motion is approved at 12, I think, 6:97.
We need to do a better job in promoting the county.
Yep, all right. Do I have a second? Got a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Bullard? Thank you, sir. Very good presentation, sir. Look forward to maybe I'll get a chance to come down to the meeting one night.
We'd love to have you there, sir.
All right, thank you, sir.
Next item is regarding food trucks at the Lasburg property, which is the old school board property. The board recently had a request for the use of that property to use it as a food truck location. And what I wanted to do is determine from the board if that is something that the board wishes to continue, or, and if so, if the board wishes staff to draft a policy and bring that back to the board at the next meeting.
Comments from the board?
I would like for the staff to develop a policy.
You'd like to develop the policy, Mr. Bullard? Any other comments? We had one food truck up there here a little while ago, and there is room for a few more up there, if we get them parked right now.
Get the policy, and then we can decide.
Yeah. But we can see what staff has, what staff can come up with. I don't know what's your timeframe on coming up with something?
We will certainly try to get that to the board at the next meeting.
At the next meeting?
Yes.
All right. Do you want that in a motion, or you just, is this good enough, what you just got?
No, if the board, you can do that as a motion, that's fine.
All right.
So, Mr. Chairman, will this open up the language or the investigation for other things to be there besides that?
Right now, we're just on the food trucks, but we could review something else.
What you got on your mind, Mr. Fisher?
I don't, I'm just saying that with that in mind, there could be, say, someone wants to come along and do a flea market there, or somebody wants to come along and sell seafood there. With the county opening this up, we need to be aware of potential for the future, and how we want to handle it as far as parking. I know some of the parking areas are already taken up by transit people going to and from work, and we need to be aware of that, and to consider all the options that we'll be opening up to.
Would we have to come up with a different policy for the other items?
What I was looking at was strictly, it would just cover the food trucks.
Food truck, yeah. So we'd have to do something different for other things, which could be in the future.
If the board wishes to use the property in that manner.
All right. Mr. Gregory, are you seeing any problems with any of that?
I'll look into it.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Fisher, we'll, Mr. Gregory's going to look into that for us, so it's not off the plate. All right, we got a motion to get Mr. Tadlock to go ahead and proceed with policy. Didn't get a second.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
I just want to go over a couple of the 2024 projects that we have on schedule. Of course, we have the capital improvement plan we are continuing to work on, broadband, the regional effort with all points, along with the franchise agreement that we have with Breeze Line as well. Sanitary district upgrades at both the Reedville and Calio plants, courthouse roof repair, evaluate other building and facility needs, emergency regional radio system, next-gen 911, comprehensive plan, five-year review with the Planning Commission, opioid settlement monies, ERP software, financial and operations software upgrades and/or replacement, the school complex sewer septic upgrades, ARPA funding, ARPA tourism monies, forensic audit RFP, evaluate policies and procedures related to general fund balance and other finance policies, finalize update of the county personnel policy, evaluate economic development in the county. We also have the reassessment that we would need to start this year, and of course, we will always look at the General Assembly and which bills are coming down. The Planning Commission voted to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they have reviewed the minimum acreage for commercial camping, and determined that acreage is not the most relevant factor. Sewer disposal, garbage, and availability of potable water are more important factors that can be addressed through the conditions of the conditional use permit. Therefore, the Planning Commission does not recommend adding a commercial camping minimum campsite acreage to the zoning ordinance. This was a question that the board had sent back to the Planning Commission for their recommendation.
Mr. Fisher, you have any comments on that?
We gave considerable thought to it, and with the current rules and regulations, we thought this was the best route to go, and to be fair to everybody.
Do we need to do anything else on that, Mr. Tadlock? Or should the board do something different?
Not unless the board has any other questions related to that. The Planning Commission did respond to the question that the board posed to the commission.
We sent it back for acreage. Board have any comments on to it? Right now, our ordinance states that, I can't remember what it states now, in commercial...
I believe it's just conditional use permit.
It's a conditional use permit, all right. So we can, a conditional use permit, we can cover sewer disposal, garbage, everything like that. It doesn't have to go back for anything else. The board can handle all of that. All right. Okay.
All right. Next item I have is the board requested information related to the ARPA spending overview. In the packet, you have information and the breakdown of the various categories, total obligated monies related to the ARPA fund, and these are the county funds. It's $1,704,094. And total unobligated is $645,217. The second page there shows the obligated or those items that have been expensed, and we do have several projects that we have on the horizon that we are looking to use the remaining of those monies. Part of that is the sewer project down to the school. We have the HVAC that we are looking at for this building, and then potential software upgrades for the ERP software, whether it's an upgrade to the existing system that we have, or looking at various other software packages. We do have, have to have these funds committed by the end of this calendar year, 2024, and the funds must be spent by December 31st, 2026. Just want to give you an update on the RFPs that we have out currently. We have several. We do have an invitation for bids for the middle high school sanitary treatment modification project that is due January 18th. We have the forensic audit RFP that is due January 19th. We have the roof engineering RFP for the quartz building that's due January 22nd. And in your packet, I don't need any action on this tonight, and we're still finalizing some information with the county attorney and within the document itself. But there is an engineering architectural services RFP that we were proposing to the board to look at capital needs, capital planning for the buildings, looking at space needs, looking at renovation versus new, and kind of looking at the overall picture that the board was seeking some questions to be answered. So if you look at that draft RFP, let us know if you have any questions, if there's anything in there that you wish to add or remove in the scope of work, but we will be finalizing that and bringing that back to the board, hopefully at the February meeting. Last item I have, we have the Economic Development Commission, the... the Planning Commission, and the Board of Supervisors. There was a request to have a meeting of all three commission boards. The EDC and Planning Commission, it's selected 5:30 on January 18th. And I wanted to confirm that with the board, so I would be able to get back with the other commissions to confirm.
We picked that because it was our regular meeting night, and we can have that first and then go on into our regular meeting.
All right. How's that sound to the board?
5:30.
5:30.
I already had it in my phone, I just, I sure get the right time.
All right. Is that okay with everybody?
All right. If that's all right with everyone, I'll get with the EDC and Planning Commission members and get that confirmed. Gotcha. Last item I have is Dominion Energy would like to have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. If you would like to send me some dates, we can get that information back to Dominion Power. And it's in reference to solar.
Solar panels, yep. We had one already with Northern Electroelectric, and this will be the second.
Would it? How soon would you think? How soon?
Whatever time the board would like.
This month?
If at all possible, we're in the process with the solar, as we have been for the last four years. So the sooner we could get to it, the sooner we can move on with what we've got, or what the Planning Commission has.
Would it be beneficial to us to invite the EDC, since they are in the?
If you, if you'd like.
Bullock, would you be, would you and your board be interested in attending?
We got a joint meeting with the school board on the 25th of January, correct? Well, the finance committee.
This month, 25th?
Yes, 25th.
Yeah, it's on 25th.
Right.
Any particular dates? Is Dominion basically agreeable to most anything within the future, or do they have some restrictions?
I don't know. He had just reached out to see if that was something that the board and Planning Commission, and we can certainly add the EDC to that as well. The, what I can do, if the board would like, is to reach out to the contact with Dominion and get several dates that would be convenient for Dominion.
That would be good.
And then that way, we can kind of confirm with the board's commissions here.
Yeah. I think that would be real good if you did that.
The main thing was just to make sure that the board was interested, I guess, to set that up. And we can pursue that if the board wishes to do so.
All right, okay with the board? All right. Go ahead, Mr. Tadlock.
We'll get that straight. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
So we have. All right, next item on the agenda would be the Board of Supervisors comment. Great. Mr. Williams, I'll start with you. Anything you'd like to comment on?
I'd just like to say it took a long point, it took a long road for me to get to this seat, and I'm honored to be here with you guys. I look forward to working with staff and each of you supervisors going forward.
Glad to have you.
Yep, glad to have you. Mr. Long?
Yes, Mr. Tadlock, what's the update on the old school board office?
Well, it's, the purpose of the RFP that we're looking at is to evaluate properties such as that in the sheriff's office and to get a sense of what the board could possibly do with those buildings, where they cost to, if it would be best to tear those buildings down, to kind of get a better sense from a total perspective of all of the properties.
Okay, now, the last meeting, we discussed about meeting with the boards that can help us. You know, I talked about businesses, bringing businesses to the county and other things that could benefit us. And have you thought of a meeting?
That's what we've scheduled for next Thursday, the 18th.
Okay.
At 5:30. And that's with the Economic Development Commission, the Planning Commission, and the board.
Okay.
Sir, if I may add to that, Tuesday in our economic development meeting, this coming Tuesday, we will have an expert come in. He's a person, gentleman, who owned a McDonald's restaurant in Kilmarnick. And he's gonna talk to us and give us some recommendations, some advice. So we're gonna have that conversation with him. That's the starting point for us to be able to learn what it takes to be able to bring a franchise restaurant into our area.
So, good. Can I help you, Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Brand?
I got a few things. Mr. Tadlock, I had someone talk to me a little bit about All Points Broadband. They've been trying to reach out to them to get some questions answered and to figure whether or not they're gonna be eligible for the internet service, and pretty much they're getting fluff. I have an individual contact you, and I would like you to try to help them to get their questions answered and not get fluff. I get frustrated with this because when a citizen has a question, they deserve an answer. And they don't need to be running around and get maybes and all of this stuff.
We'll check with you to see if it's the same gentleman. Mr. Basie and I received some information this afternoon.
It's not, no. But I'll make sure this person will talk to you.
Okay, that's no problem.
Probably sooner than later. Mr. Long touched on this a little bit, but we had an opportunity this week to be interviewed by Jackie, the fire department. And she's doing an article on the fire department. But at the end of all of that, we had discussions on workforce development. Mr. Long has talked about this several times in the past, about workforce development. We need workforce development. But if you already look at what we invest in, now, we have probably some of the best workforce development programs. We have programs in high school, we started up the ag department again. We got the VOTAC Center, we got RCC. And, you know, sometimes we, as board members, need to sit back and listen to what people have to say. And I'm gonna applaud her on this. And one thing that, when she mentioned this, it kind of like smacked me upside the head is, how well is, how well are these programs being promoted by the county? How well are these programs being promoted by RCC, the tech center? Because we can invest all the money in the world in these programs, but if you don't get the students to attend, and you don't promote it, and you don't get the businesses within our counties to support them, we're not gonna get much out of it. So I don't know what this board needs to do. I'm kind of halfway thinking, do we need to talk, have meetings with someone from the VOTAC Center and someone from the college? And let's talk about promoting these programs, what we can do to help promote them? But, you know, Mr. Haney teaches the HVAC program through RCC. Well, unless you get that pamphlet in the mail, or maybe sometimes you hear it on the radio or on a newspaper ad, you don't hear much about it at all. But I know it's jobs out here in this community where we need HVAC technicians. We have to get behind these programs. And I believe it's our job to help promote these programs. It's part of our economic development. It's to grow businesses in this county. And that was one thing I wanted to bring up when we have a joint meeting, and I'll save the rest of my conversation for that. But I'm gonna use something as a good example. The town of Warsaw has done a major turnaround in the last few years on what they've done in that town. And I know it's a town, and we're talking about a county. But we can make progress in this county just as well as a town. And we have to figure ways to promote businesses, workforce development, and give incentives to bring businesses to this county. And I think that needs to be a priority of this board. And that being said, that's all I got to say on that.
All right, Mr. Fisher?
I can only comment on Jimmy's comments, but for instance, with what you're saying, the VMRC, Virginia Marine Resources Commission, has just started a work program to get young people into the seafood business whereby students, and some of them from Northumberland are in it right now as we speak, are given mentors, people who are in the industry, and the students are given licenses, which is a, for instance, their oystering is a closed licensing right now. You can't go buy an oyster license, haven't been for a number of years. If you've got one, you can either sell it, or you can give it away, but you can't go get a license. Anyway, they're putting these young people out there and giving them times when they can go out on the boats and oyster and actually have a license and sell their catch. As I say, we have people in Northumberland County, students, that have entered into that program right now. And that goes right along with what you're saying. Number one, it keeps our people here, keeps our young people here, and it puts the trade in. The average age of the local waterman now is about 50 years old. And they're interested in getting young people involved, and I go right along with what you're saying. I think this is also a good program that.
I mean, I started with the ag department in Northumberland High School, learning how to weld a little bit. Then from there, I went to RCC and took a welding program. And, you know, I can weld pretty much anything I want to now. But I have many talents of things that I can do. I can work on diesel engines, gas engines, you know, firing EMS. I've had those opportunities given to me in the past, but I've also had good mentors as well. And we, that's how you're gonna grow this county. And we have to, we have to put an effort into doing that. It's not all about, it's just not all about, you know, the money. We have to invest time.
Fisher? I will agree with Mr. Brand and Mr. Fisher. These programs need to be speeded up. We need to try to get as many people involved as we can, because jobs are very important. The trades out here are lacking employees. Every trade is, I mean, it's way below what it should be. And we need, and we need people. I know, I teach at the college. I have, the age averages from 19 to 49. I have one girl in class again this year, and she has gotten her a job. So, you know, women can get involved just like guys. So I don't want the women to be afraid to come. If you want to come take the class, come on, which is great. I love to see them get into it. But some of the guys that come in, they're just as green as can be. They don't even know what a screwdriver is. But before they leave our class, they know what all the tools are, they've learned a lot. And it takes them, and then most of them within a year have gone into trade and got a job. So there is progress. So we just need to expand on as much as possible. And the only other thing I want to say, I have two new supervisors, and welcome here. Glad to have y'all, look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? All right. Next item would be the approval of the check register. I hope everybody's had a chance to review that.
Yeah, I'm moved that we approved.
All right, I got a motion, do I have a second? All right, I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All right, ladies and gentlemen, our next item is a convenient closed meeting, but we're gonna move that to the end, and we're gonna have our public comment period right now.
Let's take a two-minute.
You want to take a minute? All right, Mr. Long, you want to take a 10-minute break?
No, you don't have to take that long, what else? What, this a break?
10 minutes for you, because I know you're gonna get talking. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna take a 10-minute break, and we'll be right back. Gentlemen, I want to call this meeting back to order here. Thank y'all for being patient with us. The first person on the public comment period is Emory Rice. Ladies and gentlemen, one thing before Mr. Rice speaks, I give y'all four minutes to speak, so come on up, sir.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. My name's Emory Rice, and I'm here to speak to you on behalf of the Northumberland County Little League Board about some repairs to the roof at our facility. Some background information on the roof at our facility is that's the original roof built in 2008, and the building houses our restrooms, boardrooms, equipment storage, kitchen, and our concession stand. We've been raising funds on our owns over the past couple of seasons with this project in mind. However, this is a very large expense for our small organization. We've been saving portions of our sponsorship donations, profits from hosting tournaments, concession stands profits, and the money raised during our coaches pitch tournament that we hold every summer. We also haven't had a running lawnmower for two years and have been hired an outside service to cut our fields instead of purchasing our new lawnmower until we can cover the cost of our roofing project, which is our first priority. Last year, we applied to the county for funding through the Capital Improvement Needs Program, and we were told we were denied in part because our request was below the $50,000 threshold. The quotes for a new roof range anywhere from $13,000 to a shingled roof to roughly $21,000 for a metal roof. Ideally, we would like to replace with metal to alleviate this repair from happening anytime in the near future. The metal roof would last 40 years, and with the paint they make on it, we could paint it in that 35- to 40-year range and get another 30 to 40 out of it, where a shingled roof, such as this one, didn't last with 15, but we'd be looking at 20 or so. The roof needs to be replaced immediately, as the current condition has become so bad that we have leaks that are causing puddling in certain areas of our building. This puddling has become a safety hazard, and it's already caused an injury to one of our board members who slipped and fell this past fall while cleaning the ladies restroom. Because of these safety hazards and liability issues, we will be locking the doors, including the restrooms, when there are no Little League events going on, taking place until necessary repairs have been completed. We do not want to be liable for any injuries that may occur from these facilities being unattended by our personnel. The Northumberland County Little League leases the building and grounds from the county and bears the majority of the expenses for maintenance and upkeep, yet we aren't the only ones who benefit from our facilities. The school teams use our facilities and fields for very little cost. They use our restrooms, fields, and field equipment daily throughout the spring ball season, as well as benefit from our concession stand and kitchen. They use our internet free of charge to livestream their games. The school teams use our facilities as much as we do with minimal expense. In closing, we want to make it known that we may be the leaseholders for these facilities, but we are not the only ones who extensively use these grounds, even if we bear the brunt of the cost. We would like to request help with the funding for our new roof from the county and possibly the school, who also benefit from using our facilities.
All right. All right, Mr. Rice, board members have any comments?
How much, what was those prices again, please?
Currently, Junior, it was $13,000 for a shingled and $21,000 for a metal roof. These were done last year. We have new quotes that we should have before our next meeting, which is next week, that are with four different companies that are in the works on getting them. And I do expect them to be a little higher just because of the cost of materials, especially the metal one. But as far as life expectancy, we think the metal would outweigh the shingle in the long run.
How far along are you right now financially?
We've raised some of it, but I don't know that we can quite cover it all out of pocket right this moment. I won't know exactly until we get, you know, a final quote put in.
So what are you looking for?
As much as we could get. The more helped about.
That was a loaded question.
The more helped about it.
I got some questions.
See, the Little League property in the building, does that belong to the Little League?
No, sir. We lease it from Northumberland County. Now, in the lease agreement that was originally done, the building was not there. So that's not involved in the paper on the lease agreement.
Okay.
The county paid to have the building put up there, if that answers your question.
County, it's county property?
Yes, sir.
This building that you're talking about, is that the concession stand?
Yes, sir. It houses everything. It houses the restrooms, our boardroom, we have an equipment shed.
equipment shed on the, on the backside of it, plus the kitchen and concessions.
Okay, and it's the responsibility of the Little League to take care of that, but the school also has just as many functions as y'all do?
Correct.
Okay, and I'm going to hit you with another. The grass cutting. It's county-owned property. Y'all are responsible for keeping the grass cut.
Other than during spring ball season, and they take care of, I believe it's just the two large fields that time of year. We still, they use our, the smaller fields that we have for practices, but we are in charge of lawn maintenance on those. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, it's, it's confusing, because I have a hard time understanding why the Little League, and don't get me wrong when I say this, why should y'all have to purchase a lawnmower to cut grass when it's that type of equipment already on site?
Well, we don't have a working, well, the school does, yes, I understand what you're saying. Yes, sir.
And I just, sometimes some of these deals, the way they've made, and I'm, I'm still fairly new to the board. I'm confused on how they come up and how it was presented, and I, I just, I don't understand it. But it's, how can, the Little League struggles enough as it is to, to provide these teams and have coaches and all, and I don't, it's hard for them to keep going. They burden the best. I, I just think some, sometimes we need to regroup on how things and decisions were made and go back and, and.
Reevaluate.
Yeah, reevaluate it. It's, I, I don't, I don't understand that.
We have to look into it, look at more.
Which, which type of lawnmower are you talking about? One that cuts the regular grass or the one that cuts the infill on the grass? That's a special?
Regular grass, not, not the one that cuts our infill.
And did I hear you say that you guys had voted to close the bathrooms unless you had Little League games going on?
Yes, so for, when, when the school is, has practices and all, starting here in the next month or so, that, then they've been notified that the facility will be locked. They, if they're going to have restrooms out there, they need to have water bodies.
But right now, those are the only restrooms on the entire?
Yes, sir.
Remises?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rice. Next person would be Sabrina Conley and Crystal Russell. Good evening.
Sabrina Conley.
Crystal Russell.
Um, we're here, we're going to try to fit this all in four minutes. So just be patient with us, please. This is my client. I'm representing her as her realtor. She came to me and asked for me to sell her home, and I said, yes, I would love to do that. I go to her home, and I was distraught. When I arrived there, I saw barbed wire, electric fences, and farm logs that barricaded her home all the way around. Her right-of-way was blocked off. She had no access to her property, and she was, is forced to create a right-of-way from her yard, which is a half a football field long. As a new mother, newborn baby, she has to park at the end of her yard to get to her home in this type of weather, which is unfit and unjust. So I'm here, we're here, asking the Board to take in consideration what we're asking you tonight. She tried to sell her home last year and was unable to. She spent money on all her inspections that she needed, and she was unable to sell her home because of her neighbors. They barricaded her in. She was harassed. They were harassed. They went to closing, and the buyer ended up not wanting to buy her home because what she had experienced, what they had experienced, and it's just not right. So I'm here today to present to you documents that I have from her last realtor. I have pictures that I would like you guys to look at showing how she's barricaded in on her property. I also want you guys to look at how she's unable to get into her property, and she's unable to sell her home. We want you guys to have these neighbors remove the barbed wire, the electric fence, and these logs that they put around her property, because for one, it's unsafe. She has kids. It's a health risk. It's not an agriculture property, and she's not an animal. So I don't see why she needs to be barricaded in without having access to her private driveway that's in her deed and that the county has recorded. She and her fiance tried to remove these logs. They put them back up. The 911, the county police department had reached out to her and said, hey, you know, you have to have a 911 address, you know, in case anything happens. What are you going to do? She shouldn't have to make a brand-new driveway where she already has one. It's a private driveway that's in her deed that she's been using since she bought her home, and she shouldn't have to be forced to create another right-of-way to her house. So she's here also to let you guys know what she experienced, what she's gone through, and we are asking for your help to let us know what she can do to be able to sell her property and have these neighbors remove these logs and these fences, because I have printed out the codes of Virginia that actually says these fences were not supposed to be put there. It's only for agriculture use for animals and for farming, and she does not have a farm. They do not own a farm, and they need to be removed immediately so we can proceed with the transaction to get her house sold. So if you want to hear from Ms. Russell, she's here if you need to ask me. Any questions, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you guys have as well.
Have you contacted Sheriff's Department?
We did.
Do you have an attorney?
I have registered an attorney, yes, I have one.
All right, because this is a civil issue.
Yeah, I was told that as well.
Mr. Gregory, would you like to comment any further on that?
Well, it's a civil, what you said, Mr. Haney, I would suggest you contact the Sheriff's Office and the Commonwealth's Attorney possibly, and also the Sheriff of Providence County to assist with this.
Okay, and she did it as well, but what, I just want to know, what is the Board's job when it comes to violations of the county where they do not comply with the law? I know we, she has an option to get a lawyer, but if she doesn't have the funds to get a lawyer, isn't it the Board's obligation as well to do something about, you know, the removal, because she tried to remove those. The officers told her she had the right to remove them. She doesn't have access to her property. If anything were to happen to her, if she needs emergency services, if she need, ambulances get there, she needs fire trucks to get there, they have no way of getting to her. So she needs to be able to have access to her private driveway that's in her deed, and the county has to do something about it, because if something happens to her and her family and the officers can't reach her, then I think that may have to fall back on the county.
As Mr. Haney said, it, it falls onto a civil, civil crime, not a criminal crime. Had it been a criminal crime, then yes, the Sheriff's Department would have stepped in and taken action. But with it being civil?
Right.
It does, where, to my way of thinking, Mr. Gregory can correct me if I'm wrong, but...
So if she doesn't have access, 911 access?
How about the code, what the code says, state code says, they shouldn't have those, those fenced out?
Well, I, I don't know.
And I do have these codes, and I've rented them, printed them out. It's obstruction of accrochments that they're doing. They did not comply with the division of fences because they needed permission from our client in order to put up the fence. No one gave, came and asked her for permission to do that. So they are breaking all these codes that, you know, the county, that the state of Virginia has here.
I think the only thing that the county could actually take a look at, and I think maybe somebody should, as far as the liability side, is are there any ordinance violations? That, and when it comes to a life safety issue on the fire side, is there any restrictions that a fire engine, in case of an emergency, cannot gain entry to that residence? So those are two things I think for the county to cover themselves, we need to look into. Do we have any grounds to act on it? I don't know. But, you know, sitting here just thinking about that, are there any ordinance violations? And another one is, is there any life safety issues restricting fire and EMS, first responders to gain entry to that residence?
County, county ordinance and state ordinances also?
Yes.
Both.
Mr. Gregory, what's your?
I'm happy to look into it, to the Board's direction. Again, I would encourage you to contact the Sheriff's Office.
Yes.
The Commonwealth's Attorney.
Well, they had, I'm sorry to interrupt you. They've been called because the neighbors ended up getting them charges for trespassing on their own property, which they went to court, and they, it was thrown out. So the Sheriff's Office know about it. They had that recorded. I mean, it's just gone too far, you know, for her not to be able to get in her own lane through her private right-of-way. I mean, she has to, they, it's barricaded to the point where there's a little area where she can park, but if a fire truck, ambulance, they can't fit there. And it's muddy because it's a yard. It's not a rock roadway. So if the police went there and tried to, for any reason, they'll get stuck because it's muddy, it's tracked because they tried to get there, and they got stuck, so they can't even get to their home without having to walk up to their steps. So there's no way big vehicles would be able to go, get in there with the amount of mud and rain and everything that's saturated in her yard. There's no way.
Well, I know, I know it's rules and everything, but the county got to be lobbying something. I mean, if, if it's a code, it's a code.
I don't know, Mr. Blong. You said you engaged an attorney. I'm happy to speak with them as well about this, just to see, see what they can do, if they understand what you're on. But I'm happy to get to them, talk with them about it, but I don't think the county would have any contact. But again, contact the Sheriff's Office, the Commonwealth's Attorney as well.
The Commonwealth Attorney, she's aware of it. I mean, and like I said, there was charges brought up against me and my fiance and his friend for removing the post. I called the police prior to me removing those posts to let them know that they blocked me in. And they said, well, I had every right to go and remove the post, and what they did was against the law and that it needs to be, like you said, a civil suit. And I have contacted an attorney, and I, like I said, I was carrying my unborn child, you know, and, yeah, it was, it's been, it's been a bit much. Yeah, so, yeah. And the Commonwealth Attorney, she threw out the trespassing charge that the neighbors tried to put against me and my fiance and his friend. So, yeah, they've been contacted, you know. But just like she said, you know, as far as my right-of-way, you know, it's been like that for years. I've been in the household five years. It just, just happened this, this past year when I said I was going to put my house on the market. They, whatever reason, kind of whatever type of way, I don't know, just put those posts up this past year. And I, I've had any issues with this before. They just, yeah. Not only that, they also, I, I know they got the right to, to carry their firearms, you know, if they, whatever, but in case they had also had shootout as well, when, when there was clients coming in to see my house, they would shoot off, very, very, whatever, whatever this, they did, they kept on shooting off, and they scared the clients away. So also, they also stopped them from, you know, the selling the house all the way around. It's, it's, it's just bad. Emotional stress on myself as well as my unborn child, you know, and my fiance and all of them, we had to go through, you know, so.
Sure, Mr. Gregory, this could not be the first time this happened. Got to be something.
Especially for the electric fences.
It's not the first time something like this happened.
My house is always out back, back there. That house been there for years, and I'm like, you know, what right do y'all have to put these posts down here, you know?
With, with barbed wire and electric fences.
Right, that's not safe.
That's not, I mean, as far as the county, that is not allowed on residential property. It's not farm. It's not agriculture, so it needs to be removed. It needs to come down. She needs not to be barricaded, and something has to be done about it. She has kids. She can't let, allow her kids to go outside without having to watch them from being electric shocked from, or cut up by barbed wire and electric fences.
And the police was called on our realtor as well when she tried to, on the client that was actually going to close in May of last year. And for whatever reason, I have no idea, like, you know, like the Commonwealth had mentioned to the neighbors that, you know, this is a civil case. They called the police on the, the potential buyer, and she, you know, it was just a whole lot of extra stuff going on, and she just said that she wasn't going to be able to purchase them because of the craziness from the neighbors, you know, so, yeah, it's, it's been, like she said.
You've, you've contacted the Commonwealth?
Commonwealth Attorney, yes, the Pacific Commonwealth Attorney. She did, she was the one who removed the trespassing charges. They tried, you know, protecting me, my boyfriend and his, his friend as well when we, when we removed the posts, you know, so, yeah.
But it's more than like 50 posts, all the way around from the sides, all the way from the front, all the way around.
It's all the way around. It's barricading, yeah, all the way around. It's, it's, yeah.
What are you suggesting, Mr. Gregory?
I would suggest, well, the same thing I said earlier, was to contact the Commonwealth's Attorney, Sheriff's Office, and obtain some.
All right, all right, okay.
What's your address, ma'am?
60 Quiet Cove Drive.
Beg your pardon?
60 Quiet Cove Drive. And also, in, in that right there, there's a letter that the county sent me when they seen that I put in a temporary access that I could go in and out of my driveway. They asked me, was that my permanent, they, they was aware of the, the neighbors and what, what had happened. And they asked me, was I making that temporary, like she said, narrow access my, my permanent driveway, which I can't because cat never want me down there. It's, it's too narrow of a lane, you know, that I can barely get my car down there. My fiance, he can get, he can barely get his truck in there. No ambulance, no fire truck, anything cannot go down there to do what it is they need. It's 15-foot long.
Right, so, I meant, I understand he says that she needs to get a lawyer, but as far as her having 911 access, I don't see what a lawyer will be able to do regarding, regarding that. That's the county responsibility.
Did she get her 911 address?
No.
No?
She still has that same address, and she doesn't, she shouldn't have to create a whole new address when she already has one.
No.
That's right.
Right, and that's what I mentioned to them. I said, is that what's just a temporary access for them, for people to go in and out to, you know, I have to come and do my lawn, lawn work and all that, so, yeah.
And then we do have pictures, if you want, if you want to take a look at it, I would, you know, live where you look at it, and it just shows the post that they put it around her house. It shows the wire and everything, and how she, you know, cannot get out at all.
I have to report after, because like I said, when I, when I got the property, I rented it, and then I had the, you know, I purchased it, and none of that was going on, you know, when I.
Not, not to prolong it, ma'am, but I'm just curious from my own interest. The, the driveway, is that a right-of-way that you're using, or do you own the driveway?
It's the right-of-way, and it's all the shared driveway, and then, and the, I have a road maintenance agreement. It's also, also in my.
Yeah, I'm just curious. Thank you, thank you.
And then the neighbors, Ashley is on the other side of the road.
They're on the other side, yeah.
So it's not like their property is here, hers is here.
And they have their own driveway.
You have a road here.
The ones that block me off have their own driveway, coming in and out.
So there's no use, they should cross over the road, go to her side, and put up a fence. That's just hatred. You know, it's, it's nothing to do, his house is here, hers is here, and the road is in the middle.
Yeah.
There's no use of doing that, you know, it's, it's sad.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I know 95% of this is civil. The one part that I'm concerned about is the 911 address in the entrance. And right now, she's saying she doesn't have a 911 address due to access.
Correct.
Egress into the property. I think someone from the county needs to go take a look at that, and if it's an issue with a 911 address or egress into a property, that's as far as I think the county can go. But that's getting into a situation where...
We could get Philip Marston to go down and check that out.
We, we do have 60 Quiet Cove Drive listed in our real estate. It was 60 Quiet Cove Drive?
Yeah.
So that would be a 911 address, but we'll double-check that to make sure it's in the system.
I just think clarification for the county, as far as that 911 address goes, I think we need to... goes, I think we need to, someone needs to take a look at that nine-one-one address and the egress into the property.
She should have an impeded, impeded right-of-way to that property without all this hindrance.
Yeah, you can't, you can't landlock somebody like that.
Yes, exactly.
No, you can't do that, that's, that's not right.
It's not right, it's against the law.
I cannot see how that is.
But it's, it's done all the time, you know that, it's everywhere it's done.
And maybe that will help you some, but I, the rest of it is, is beyond this Board's control.
Okay.
But, Mr. Gregory?
So what we're gonna do then, you know, she, she wants to move, she wants to sell her home, um, so they're gonna do any means necessary to remove every log that's there because that is her right. And that's what we wanna have to do, uh, to be able to give her access. If they put them up, we're gonna have to take them back down. But again, it doesn't sound like it's gonna be peaceful from the neighbors.
Well, if you do that, we'll, we'll try to look at it on the, on the nine-one-one side, make sure everything's okay. But, uh, you need to contact the Commonwealth's Attorney or hire our attorney. And I don't think, uh, Mr. Gregory has any other advice as far as that.
Not at this time.
It's, it's just not something that the Board deals with, you know.
But you're gonna check into it.
But, but we'll do what we can on our part.
I'll, I'll, I'm happy to look into it, I don't really know what to look into with this.
Right, I mean.
It's, it's, if the sheriff, if, if they're taking your property essentially by blocking you from accessing your own property, that, that's, that is, that is, I'm not a lawyer, but that's, that's, that can't be, that's unacceptable, and that's not, um, that's inconsistent with the law, I'll say. And so the sheriff should be able to help you, and if you wanna remove, if those posts are on your property, you're fully entitled to remove them. And if you, if they interfere with you doing that, then, uh, then contact the Sheriff's Office. I can't give you legal advice, that's about as far as I can go. But you, you, it sounds like you have cause for redress here. Definitely need to hire a lawyer, see legal counsel to assist you. Call the Sheriff's Office, call the Commonwealth Attorney as well, that would be what I would recommend. That's as far as I can go.
Okay, well, we certainly appreciate you giving us the opportunity to, you know, let you know what's going on. Um, but again, if you can follow up and have, I forget his name, to come out and at least look, um, that'll be great. And we'll follow up as well to see if someone actually did go out and look at what's going on down there.
Can you leave your contact information, Mr. Tadlock?
Sure.
Actually, we have. Yeah, so we can just, uh, we'll do the checking and give you a call back.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
All right. Good luck.
Have a good night.
Miss Conley?
Yes, sir.
Would it be possible to get the photos emailed to me?
Yes, I could do that.
You have my email address?
Yes, sir, I do, thanks.
Thank you, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next person is Larry Coleman.
I will just put the next.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, I have no one else on the sign-up sheet tonight, would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak tonight? All right, anyone in the virtual world tonight like to speak? Do we have anybody in the virtual world that would like to make a public comment tonight? How many people on? Anybody wanna speak yet? Anybody in the virtual world like to make a public comment? All right. I'll close the public comment period then. Only other item we have on our agenda tonight is to convene into closed meeting. And I will need some proper language for that.
Yes, sir. We need a motion from the North Hillland County Board of Supervisors.
Oh, oh, Mr. Tadlock.
Yes, sir.
Before we do that, before we go into it, I'm sorry. Jackie from the Rappahannock Rocker wants a board picture. So if we can get a group picture before we go into closed meeting, so you won't have to wait around. All right? We'll all get up front, or wherever you want us.
No, you can. You, yes.
All right. All right, nice big smile. All right, gotta thank you.
All right, Mr. Tadlock, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I had promised her a picture.
Yeah, that's.
But, yeah, that is the one we were having stuff at.
Need a motion that, are you ready?
Yeah, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, that's all right. Uh, need a motion that the North Hillland County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2, 3711A1, for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters in Section 2.2, 3711A29. Discussion award of public contract involving expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers and discussion of terms as cope with such contract, where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or nego- negotiating strategy of the public body. And this is in regards to the, uh, contract with Rob Mangrum. Invited to attend the closed meeting as necessary are the county administrator, uh, county attorney, and assistant county administrator, because they are deemed necessary, and their presence will reasonably aid the Board in its consideration of topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia for you, Section 2.2, 3712F.
Mr. Chairman, if the information that, uh, Mr. Tadlock just read moved, are we going to close session?
I have a second.
Second.
All right, got a motion, second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are now in closed meeting. Closed meeting, um.
Motion?
All right, all right, let me read this real quick. Need a motion that the North Hillland Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
Now you can do it.
Motion made, Chairman?
All right, you got a second?
Second.
Got a motion, second, any other discussion? All right, roll call vote, the ladies.
I answer by saying aye.
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 Aye. Dan, aye. All right. Who wants to make the motion?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that Mr. Tadlock move forward with a MOU between the county and the school system in regards to the Mangrum Engineering Services, um, help figure this well issue.
All right, you?
Yes, sir.
I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, second, got any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? What else you need, Tadlock?
I think that's all we need, uh, just carry over, unless the Board members have something else.
Your Board members know anything else? If not, we need a motion to carry over with to the.
Eighteenth?
Eighteenth, that's, uh.
Five thirty?
Five thirty.
I'll make a motion, we carry over until January eighteenth at five thirty P.M.
All right, uh, motion, you have a second?
I have a second.
Got a motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, all gentlemen, for coming. Thank everybody in the audience and everybody in the virtual world.